Good evening. I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting back to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer of the blessed evening?
Dear heavenly Father, we come to you this evening mindful of next week's opening to the school year for our staff. We ask that you bless each individual who will work with us next school year, giving them the enthusiasm and dedication to children so necessary to help each child meet his or her potential. Be with our administrators as they put the final touches on their preparation work this week. And Father, we ask a special blessing upon the young first-year teachers who are joining our ranks. Help them to find their way early on, and help us as we try to find the support they need to have a successful first year, and for many, first job. These things we pray in your name.
Amen.
Dr. Craft, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited to the barest of its bounds.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votay. Mrs. Asfota and Mr. Campbell are not with us. Dr. Craft?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mrs. Dyson?
Here.
Mrs. Lamoyne is not with us. Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votay. Before we go on to the first item on the agenda, Mr. Warner would like to appoint a privilege.
Thank you, Mrs. Dyson. I just wanted to let everybody know, I attended the Coastal Protection and Restoration Authority Meeting last Wednesday at DeShamet High School, the Cultural Arts Center, and it went over first class. We, the parish actually, I think, contacted us and we set the bar. From now, even it was commented in the meeting that going forward, whoever has to host this meeting next has a high bar to try to her. And Vice Principal, I just have to recognize you, Will Schneider, he did a monologue, performed a monologue called "A Love Song to St. Bernard" with the Cypress Pop Trio. It's a group out here in DeShamet, and there's two DeShamet High graduates that are part of that group, and it was absolutely fabulous. I think you can find it on YouTube if you go look for it, if you try to Google it or YouTube it. It was well done, and it just demonstrated a lot of deep parish pride in St. Bernard Parish, and it was well done. Our very own Barry and Jack also performed a, they did a, produced a, and Barry narrated a video, narrated a video, I can't say that word, but anyway. And it was really great, and we just, it was, it was just well done. The whole meeting went really well, and I would just encourage all to go take a look at those two videos. Also, one more thing, DeShamet High Alumni Golf Tournament, I played out it, I played at Oak Harbor Saturday. Thanks to all that came out, all volunteers, Ms. Votay was out there, Mr. Fernandez, Assistant to Lieutenant Lamedal was out there, a few others out there. Thank y'all so much for coming. It went over really well. Just wanted to thank people for that. Thank you, Ms. Dyson.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. I too was in attendance of that, the meeting, and after the meeting, there were so many individuals, parish presidents and staff from other parishes coming up and just talking about our facility, how beautiful it was, and you know, how, you know, how we did such a great job with the facilities, and just as Mr. Warner said, it went over so well, and it was a very well-attended meeting. The auditorium was, had a lot of people in it, and like I said, they were from so many parishes within Louisiana, so it was definitely, it was, we were able to highlight the school system in addition to the parish. And so, thank you, Mr. Warner. Anyone else? Okay, first item on the agenda, community concerns. Did anyone sign on?
None.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is Kristen Ravi Elliott from Carolyn Park donation. Hi, good evening.
Hi. We come with props. Thank you so much, Ms. Votay, for allowing me to come today. This is a two-year journey. In 2015, Wanda Ramirez, Karen Flot, Codina and I started talking. You know, the 50th anniversary of Hurricane Betsy is coming. Karen was, had left Carolyn Park by then, but Wanda and I were in fifth grade in Ms. Bauer's class. And of course, the school was devastated. And then after Hurricane Katrina, we lost that school. So, we started talking and said, you know, we need to have a reunion around the time of the 50th anniversary of Hurricane Betsy, because that was our first storm. And Wanda designed and had constructed this banner, Carolyn Park Elementary, Children of the Storms United. And that was our theme. So, we had the reunion, and of course, all of this was supposed to be wrapped up within a very short time, but here we are, two years later. And of the money that was left over, we have $750 that we voted to give to the school board in honor of Carolyn Park Elementary School. So, I do want to point out, we had a staff member and a faculty member of 10. Mr. Charlie Penisera is over there. His family has gotten him not only to the reunion, but to us tonight. Mr. Charlie served 28 years as custodian, and when his daughter-in-law contacted me and sent in his reservation, and I put it out on Facebook that Mr. Charlie was coming, the reaction was amazing. So, we are so thrilled to have Mr. Charlie here tonight, and as I said, Karen and Wanda were my co-organizers, and Benny Adama is from the host class. Our eighth-grade class at Carolyn Park Elementary in '68, '69 was the only class of mixed students who attended Carolyn Park all eight years. We were the only ones, and that's why we were the host class. So, we have pictures for you, we have a jump drive, we have documents, we gathered within our memory as best we could. Who taught us? Who were our teachers? Who were our principals? And we made a souvenir fan so that you have the years of the school, and that was the administration building there. So, we have some souvenirs for you. But I would like to share this. At the reunion, and I'll try to get through it without getting too emotional, at the reunion, Benny Adama slipped me a folded piece of paper, and he said, "Read this when you have time." I have it pinned up on my wall. And this is what he gave me. It's an essay by Tom Stanton. I don't even know who he is, but it explains precisely why Carolyn Park Elementary will live on in our memories, even though the buildings are gone. There are places on earth that mean more than words and pictures can explain. Writer Willie Morris called them terrains of the heart. They are the points on our personal maps where we find our treasured memories and replenish our hungering souls. Though we never believe it as children, the gifts we come to cherish most are rarely boxed or wrapped or bought. They are the gifts of time. If I've learned anything, it's that our lives aren't about the big stories that shape history. They're about the little ones that play themselves out in the places we treasure, homes, schools, and ballparks, and with the people we hold dear. Some architects say we cannot ignore the history of a property. There is memory associated with it. They compare it to a Palimpsest parchments that in Roman times were scraped and reused, but retained shadows of earlier markings. Land is like that, etched by its past. As kids, we write our names on walls, carve them into trees and onto park benches. As adults, we buy video cameras and commission family portraits. If we're rich, we give money to be honored with a hospital wing, or a library, or a park. Ultimately, our names are marked in stone and cemented into the ground amid trees and grass. All of this for a little immortality. It's for the same reason that we want the terrains of our youth to remain forever as we remember them. For as long as they do, a part of us also remains. We live on through our attachments to people, through our relationships with the ones we love. And so, as we say goodbye to Carolyn Park, we present this to the school board. I have the whole packet for you. Where's the Atlanta star? We hope it gets put to good use, and we hope that gets put to something, just write a little note that it's from Carolyn Park.
And as long as we live, we still gonna have a use.
This is the rest of the packet. I tried to take a work and everything from the reunion, and what memories we can focus. It's also got a link to websites for Carolyn Park. Kristen, thank you so much, and to all of the members of the Carolyn Park Reunion Committee, Karen, Wanda, Benny. Y'all really put in such an effort to get this reunion together, it seems like, and we, it's heartwarming to know that your school touched you so greatly, just like I think most of ours did. And if I'm correct, I think all of you, Wanda, and Kristen, and Benny, and Karen too, I'm not sure, but also from the class of 1973, correct?
Yes.
No, Karen is not. Karen's two years older. Oh, actually, she was three years older. She wasn't senior when I was a freshman. Okay, so but Andrew Jackson, and then Benny went to DeShamet, so they are long-life residents, and have gone to our schools for so, so many years, and it's just very touching that, you know, you remember your school days in such an old, warm and wonderful way. And I was very generous of the committee also to donate the remains of your, you know, your committee fundraising to the school system, so we really do appreciate it, and thank y'all, each and every one of y'all very much. It was a delight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Votay.
You know, and I think this is just an example of all that is wonderful in St. Bernard. We talk family, we talk relationships, we talk history, and connections of people. And, you know, as you handed me this fan, in the years of Carolyn Park, the 40 years that it was in existence, you listed all five principals, and these names just, you know, just to go down memory lane, First Mercedes Cleese, and then Joe Burney, that we worked with, and Johnny Grectel, and Jackie Pace, and then the last one for 20 years, Catherine Thornton, most of whom were really good friends of ours that we taught with for many, many years, and it just brings back such wonderful memories. And like Ms. Dyson said, that it touched y'all so much that you came back together. Really, I remember when you called on that vacant piece of land, you know, that you dig off.
We do have, we do have a picture of us meeting at the site. I brought tarps and benches, and Wanda got the banner, so we don't get a good picture.
And we really appreciated y'all arranging that. That was so sweet, you know, so, well, y'all put all this together and just gathered there. And so, I'm telling you, at the opening of the planetarium that morning, right?
I know.
And she asked if she could come do this. I said, "Pick your date, and just let me know," and we was very, very happy to have you with us, and I don't know what else. And Mr. Charlie over there, we all remember Mr. Charlie, so, so, so many years there at Carolyn Park, and took care of the building and the people, and most importantly, the people, you know, for all of those years. So, we're so happy to have you back with us tonight. It's a rare treat, Mr. Charlie, but see you.
Dr. Craft?
Thank you, Ms. Dyson.
Oh, wait, we have a few other comments.
Oh, sorry, we're gonna try to take a picture.
Wanda, don't leave. We appreciate you coming and sharing this moment. Chris, that was very heartwarming and touching. So, we know, and I suggest with the banner and all, this is one of the functions of momus in, is to keep some of the paraphernalia of the history of what's going on in St. Bernard. And a lot of, a lot of times, the people that's moved on, they touched many lives, and those people that survived, they remember the good times of the things that were said, and what they learned in the classes, and it's really all about touching life. It's how you treat it, and how you feel about when you look at those warm moments in the past. And we certainly appreciate this sharing with you, and we wish God's peace with you, and thank you so much for what you're doing, and keep having those reunions, because as long as you can, there's nothing like a good reunion. Not too long ago, about three years ago, we had a reunion at the church. My second-grade teacher was there, and I said, "Well, you know I was in love with you." And her husband was standing there, and he said, "Well, you can have her now." That's how boys are with these pretty teachers. They just fall in love, and it never changes over the years. Again, you fall in love with the school, your teachers, your principals, and that's extremely important as we go forward. And it's the memories that keep us with that warm, fuzzy feeling inside as we, as we move on, and also as we look back. And sometimes people say, "Don't look back," but you need to do that, because that's inspiring to you in a, in a real sense. And we wish God's blessing on each of you as you move forward. Thank you so much for sharing.
Mr. Egan?
Well, I didn't attend the school there, but I lived there, because I had a house on Puma Drive, and I was there many, many, many years. And when I walked in and I saw that gentleman on the end there, Charlie, my buddy, and this meeting meant a lot more to me than before. And unfortunately, I walked past you, buddy, because I'm getting old too, but I walked past him. When I saw you, you lit up my life, because you were, you know, Charlie, you always there, pal. And when I say that, I remember, I was a member of the carnival, a carnival club here, and I knew Charlie would be there right before the parade, because I always had a bag full of goodies for you. And then I moved, still in St. Bernard, and, you know, I told him where I was, and he came back a couple of times, and then I didn't see him till tonight. So, Charlie, this has been extremely special for me, to see you again, my buddy. And, you know, my time there, as I said, my house was right behind, it was on a Puma Drive, and the kids, you know, you could hear them, and they'd be playing and running and all that, and it was just, just something else. It was very special. It was the first house I ever bought, because I'm a chivo. I was born and raised in a main floor. And when I came down here, my wife said, "We gotta buy a house." So, you know, unfortunately, I couldn't argue with that. I'd have lost anyway. So, anyway, we did buy the house, and it was great. Our neighbors were great. My kids went to school there, and continued through the schools, the high schools and the junior schools here in the parish. So, thank God, my wife had enough sense to give us to move here, because I wouldn't go anywhere else. And thank y'all for bringing back some memories that I had of the school, believe me. And you, Charlie, good seeing you, my friend. Thank you.
Mr. Gaines?
Well, I grew up in, on Narabee, on Angella, but my girls grew up with Catherine Thornton, her son Ray, at Carolyn Park. And so, my connection to Carolyn Park is for the Thorntons. And it's amazing, amazing memories that come flooding back about her, her son, and my girls playing over there, so thank you.
Anyone else? And just a note to Mr. Charlie, we, those of us who in the school system, years ago and even now, know who really runs the schools and manages the schools. And for those of you did graduate class of '73, we have a reunion also next year.
And you know, the first, the first indication that we were gonna have to do this, we went to the, what number was it? The most recent one we had, was the 40th?
Forty.
I've lost track. Anyway.
Forty-five.
Here's all these people from graduating class of 2,000 kids, when we graduated from AJ and Equal at DeShamet. It was all the Carolyn Park kids hanging out. And when they shut everything down, they told, you know, they turned on the lights, and they're like, "You have to go home." Who ended up in the bar? All the Carolyn Park kids who weren't going home. And when I left Wanda's room about a half an hour later, and I was at the very front of LePavillon, that big, long stretch, and they were at the very back, and I could hear every word they were saying still at 12:30, you know, when they had shut us down at 11 o'clock. So, we never give up. We just don't. And we do have fans for each of you.
Thank you.
So, if the air conditioner never goes out, you can remember us.
Hey, it's always good to have a bathroom.
And this is for you personally. Thank you. And thank you for letting us come today. Again, we thank y'all very, very much. And Benny, you wanna say something?
I just wanted to say, give the annual baskets.
Oh, thank you.
And appreciate y'all having us.
Thank you. Thank y'all for coming. Thank all the wonderful members. Mr. Warner?
As a sign of, I thought, I just like you to know, we spoke with Charlie before private meeting, and he's 89 years old. He looks great.
And in the packet is the three websites, and you can go to and see all of the pictures from the reunion. There's also another on the photo album site of a reunion. We had 1986. And then, on the jump drive I gave you, we scanned things. There was a fourth-grade band performance that I scanned the program of. We had other pictures, and somebody even brought communion pictures from St. John Diani, because so many of the Carolyn Park kids went to church there and made their communion there. So, those are included as well. It's all on the jump drive, with the documents and the pictures and so forth. And we have several class pictures. I have my twin brother and my seventh-grade pictures. We were not allowed to be in the same classroom, because there was a school board rule that twins could not be in the same classroom. But we had three sets of brothers and brothers and sisters in the same classroom, which us being fraternal twins, you know. So, when it came time to only have the one eighth-grade class, and they split the class, Wanda and her group had to go to St. Louis Heights. We got to stay at Carolyn Park. There was a big controversy about whether my twin brother Mark and I would be allowed to be in the same class because of this school board rule. And finally, Mr. Tillery stepped in. My mom worked for his, his partner, Mr. Potts, and Mr. Tillery stepped in and said, "You know, this is one case where the rule's kinda silly, and no, they can both go to Carolyn Park." So, both of us did get to go all eight years at Carolyn Park. It was a wonderful.
We appreciate all, again, your donation, the memories in the banner. And if we could, maybe take a picture of everyone in the.
Okay, yeah, Wanda unfortunately had to leave. If you can stand by Mr. Charlie, that would be great, to take a short recess.
I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting back to order, please. Next item on the agenda is a motion to incorporate the report of the July 2017 General Committee meeting into the minutes of the July 2017 regular monthly meeting minutes. There's a motion by Dr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve changes to the strategic plan, action plan of 2016 through 2021. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Dr. Craft. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. Next item, personnel changes for the month of July 2017. Good evening, Mr. Granberry.
Good evening, good evening.
Looks like you've been busy again.
Oh, yeah.
As usual. Mr. Long?
Mr. Granberry, I see my, my friend Cecil is retiring.
He's making it official.
We're gonna, we're gonna miss him. Do you have a replacement for him already?
Well, we haven't started yet. He just turned his letter in yet, about two days ago, so.
Oh, okay.
What's that, September is effective?
Actually, August first.
That's about like a week from today? He's got 33 years. He just finished 33 years.
Yeah. I know he was, he was a good employee, and I'm sure we're gonna miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Yes, what are we gonna do without Cecil? Cecil has been, I mean, Cecil has, you know, been around forever, it seems like, and he was, he is wonderful, and has been a great employer, as Mr. Long said. And, but we'll miss you, Cecil, but happy retirement.
I can remember going back to Cecil when he was, when he was in high school, so I remember him as a student. And then he probably did come straight on to the school board staff. I would think he'd be with us for 33 years. So, he, I think he went to the retirement system and found out the date could be August 1st, when he thought it was gonna be September or so, and decided to make the move. So, we wish him well, and he'll still be around, though, I'm sure, and he'll put his two cents in whenever he feels necessary.
Mr. Warner?
Graduated with Cecil, and I know he'll be sorely missed at the school system. Congratulations, Cecil.
I'm sure you'll be able to see him on a Friday night at a ballgame.
Dr. Craft?
Yeah, Cecil, he was always one that could make you smile. There, you stop a few minutes and talk to him, and that's, that was Cecil's outgoing personality. And of course, he kept on climbing the ladder, and he was very successful at each stage of the work that he committed to St. Bernard Parish School Board and school system. So, he will be missed, and we wish him the best as he goes in this and shifts gears into the retirement mode.
Mr. Gaines?
Just wanna say congratulations. You heard it, Cecil.
Anyone else? Okay, any other discussion on the personnel changes? Mr. Granberry, all classes are almost?
Well, up until a minute ago, I thought we had four openings, but I looked at an email just now. We have five openings, so.
just now, we have five openings, so.
Five openings, email.
Yeah. But resignations keep coming. There was like three of them yesterday, one today, so, yeah. As long as that happens, we can't fill them fast enough, so.
Right.
But we getting there. We'll be there. We got a week.
We'll move to St. Anthony.
Are you taking Lord Orleans Parish there? Dr. Lewis?
What's that?
Are you taking our teachers?
I think it's universal, a teacher shortage are all around right now.
Absolutely.
Are you still looking as well?
Of course.
Don't look where we're looking.
Thank you, Mr. Granberry. We appreciate it. Okay, next item is a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen transportation routes.
So move.
Recommendation by the committee, motion by Dr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Wong. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation. Thank you. For student athletic insurance for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, there was a recommendation by the committee. Motion by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, next item is a motion to approve the resolution allowing cooperative purchasing for school boards. This was a recommendation by the committee. Dr. Craft, you make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Dr. Craft makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Egan. Any discussion? I think, did we read the minutes in the, at the committee meeting? I don't think so.
No, I think you have to read.
Okay. The resolution reads as such, "Whereas Act five forty-eight of the two thousand sixteen regular legislature session amended the public bid law to authorize public school districts to enter into agreements with groups purchasing organizations for the purchase of materials, equipment, supplies and the installation thereof. Whereas Louisiana School Boards Association, or the LSBA, has negotiated an agreement with the region and education service center inter-local purchasing system, which is TIPS. Whereas the agreement between the LSBA and TIPS allows for any school district which is a current dues-paying member and good standing of the LSBA to join TIPS and make purchases through TIPS under the authority of Act five forty-eight at no cost to the school district. Whereas the St. Penar Parish School District is a current dues-paying member and in good standing of the LSBA. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Penar Parish School Board does hereby authorize the superintendent to enter into the membership agreement with TIPS with the understanding that it does not obligate the St. Penar Parish School District to make purchases there through, but does provide another option under the Louisiana public bid law to make certain purchases. And be it further resolved that the superintendent communicate with the procurement staff of the St. Penar Parish School District so that, so that they are aware of this additional, additional procurement option." Okay, there is a motion on the floor in a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. Next item, are items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda? Anyone? And before we go on to superintendent's recommendations, I wanted to just point a privilege to wish Ms. Catherine Lemoine a very speedy recovery. She had surgery, she's recovering well. We miss her and hope you get back soon. And Ms. Sasevadeh told me that she was ill tonight also. So, okay, next item, superintendent's recommendations.
Uh, just really a few announcements. We were, we just completed our administrative in-service last week, so we are really ready to go for the opening of the school year. We have our teacher leaders and instructional coaches in right now for further professional development. The teachers will arrive, believe it or not, next Tuesday, August first, followed by our support staff on August the third. And the morning of August the third, we'll have our opening of school ceremony. Uh, the children will arrive Monday, August seventh, for all classes, first through twelfth grade. Kindergartners, half of them will arrive the first day on the seventh and the other half the second day on the eighth. So it is going to be a very busy few weeks. Merrill Elementary, as we all know, our newest school, is ready to go. Teachers have been, let them in this week now that we've got all of the floors ready and supplies in there. I opened the school to them and they're working in there, getting their classes, classrooms ready. And we'll have a ribbon cutting to open that school next Thursday afternoon, August third, at three forty-five, immediately before, um, parents arrive for supply night between four and six that afternoon. So that's going to be a very busy, busy, busy time. And just with an eye down the road, just our twelfth annual day of reflection breakfast will be Tuesday, um, August twenty-ninth. So it's gonna be a very, very busy, busy month. Just, you can call for tickets to Ms. Benezak, Shelby Benezak, here at the central office. Just call the office number, three zero one two thousand, ask for Shelby and she will take your order for tickets to the breakfast.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I don't have an agenda item, but maybe at the next meeting, Ms. Votchay, for superintendent, we can talk a little bit about the email you sent us with the lunch, the lunch program.
I, I can just make that announcement right now if you say a few words to. Mr. England had been asking about it. There's a federal program, um, which allows students in schools where of a certain socioeconomic status, if there's a high enough percentage, those students are eligible for free lunch and, and breakfast regardless of their individual economic status. So some of our schools are eligible for that independently, others are not. But if we cluster schools and put them together in certain combinations, there are ways in which we can partner some schools with others and it becomes feasible then at that point to put more schools within those clusters. So we sat down, Ms. Bloom, who runs our food service, and Mr. Fernandez and I sat down and took a look at the different clusters that we could put together and we were able to qualify then as a whole, all of our elementary and middle schools and Raleigh Alternative School within those series of clusters so that this coming school year, regardless of your economic status, the children at all of our elementary and middle schools and Raleigh Alternative School will be able to qualify for free lunch and breakfast without filling out any forms. Uh, our high school though, is not on that same status, so our high school students will have to go through the regular process. If their individual households qualify, they will have to fill out applications at the high school level. But we're very fortunate that we could, I guess, pair schools and look at the statistics, and I don't wanna say the word manipulate because sometimes that has a negative connotation, but to move them around so that it could be financially feasible for us to pair schools together to get all of our elementary and middle schools qualified for this. So we're very excited. Parents are being notified through the mailings that they're individual schools that they will receive, you know, prior to the beginning of the school year. And I think it's going to be, you know, a wonderful benefit for all of the children going to our schools.
So Ms. Votchay, you can do this administratively?
Yes.
It doesn't take any board action?
Right. We can do it administratively. Thank you. But if you'd like to, we could do a board affirmation. No.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. That's wonderful news to our students and our parents. It's great news, pre-K through eighth grade.
Pre-K through eighth grade, all of our students.
All students will be able to.
And Raleigh Alternative School through six through twelve will be able.
And our lunch program for free.
Correct. And breakfast.
Wonderful.
Lunch and breakfast.
And that'll be easier on the staff at the schools. They don't have to worry about.
The staff loves it because they don't have to collect all the application or collect the money every morning for the elementary children.
And the participation is gonna go up as well.
Absolutely. Participation level should go up. Prob, prob, I would think a lot more breakfast time.
Yes.
Well, Ms. Votchay, on behalf of the entire board, we want to thank you, Mr. Fernandez and Ms. Bloom for analyzing the statistics, you know, to apply for the, for this program and to, you know, benefit each and every one of our students in pre-K through eighth and the Raleigh Alternative School. It was wonderful that y'all took that initiative and we do appreciate always thinking about the students. Thank you very, very much. Okay, anyone else? Okay, is there a motion adjourned? Motion by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Dr. Craft. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.